We are one o'clock. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners this 19th day of November 2024. It's also a special meeting of the County Commission, one in which we're going to have the pleasure of swearing in a newly, the newly elected Commissioner as well as returning Commissioners, and also the reorganization of the County Commission wherein they will elect a Chair and a First and Second Vice Chair. Would you please join me in welcoming two very special people to lead our invocation and also to lead, someone to lead the pledge. Our Reverend Ken Mally of St. Scholastica Church in La Canto will be doing our invocation for us today. And our pledge is going to be led by return retired Colonel Beth Medina. Beth served in the US Army from January 1984 through January 2017. Thank you so much for your service, Beth. Starting as a private and medic and finishing up as a Colonel and Deputy Commander of 10 units across Florida, Puerto Rico, Texas, and Oklahoma. Over 33 years in uniform, Beth was stationed across the United States, deployed for training and wartime operations to more than 10 countries, and had the pleasure of being a French linguist throughout her career. Thank you again, Beth. Would you please stand and join?
Just pause to acknowledge God's presence with us, God the Almighty. Most loving God of all creation, thank you for the beauty and goodness of life that surrounds us. Help us to grow in care and reverence for all of your creation, in particular those areas which we are called to be active stewards, protectors, and educators. Thank you for all gathered here who generously offer this time and service to our county and community. Loving God, inspire us to work for the common good of all and the progress of persons founded on truth, build up in justice, and animated by love. We thank you, God, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen. Alleluia.
Amen. If you would join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Commissioner Kennard. Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
And Commissioner-elect Barrick for the next two minutes. Would you please join me down front? We will conduct the oaths in district order. We will start with Commissioner Kennard, proceed with Commissioner-elect Barrick, and conclude with Commissioner Davis. Raise your right hand, please. I will state aye, and then you will state aye in your name and repeat after me. I.
I, Jeff Kennard.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Florida.
And of the State of Florida.
That I am.
That I am.
Duly qualified.
Duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Constitution.
Under the Constitution.
Of the State.
Of the State.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of Citrus County.
Of Citrus County.
County Commissioner.
County Commissioner.
On which.
On which.
I am now about to enter.
I'm now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
There we go.
It's time, Paul, whether or not.
I.
I, Janet A. Barrick. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Florida.
And of the State of Florida.
That I'm duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Constitution.
Under the Constitution.
Of the State.
Of the State.
That I will.
That I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of Citrus County County Commissioner.
Of Citrus County County Commissioner.
On which.
On which.
I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I.
I, Holly Lee Davis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
And of the State of Florida.
And of the State of Florida.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office under the Constitution of the State.
That I'm duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the State.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Perform the duties of Commissioner.
Perform the duties of Commissioner.
For Citrus County, Florida.
For Citrus County, Florida.
Upon which.
Upon which.
I am now about to enter.
Upon which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
We're all missing my dad pretty hard today.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Just on Madam Clerk, as always.
Oh, thanks.
Last one.
Last, only last, where are you?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I would now like to conduct the roll call. Commissioner Jeff Kennard, Diana Finnegan, Janet Barrick, Rebecca Bays, Holly Davis, County Administrator Stephen Howard, County Attorney Denise Lynn, and Angelovick, Clerk of the Court. Members of the Board, I would like to call for nominations for Chair.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Kennard.
I'd like to make a motion that Commissioner Rebecca Bays take the Chair position.
Second.
And I would make a motion that we close nominations.
There is a motion by Commissioner Kennard to nominate Rebecca Bays as the Chair and close nominations, and a second by Commissioner Diana Finnegan. Do I, is there any discussion of the Board? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations. Now we're going to move the chairs around.
Next on our agenda is to pick our first Vice Chair.
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Diana Finnegan for first Vice Chair and move to close nominations.
Second.
We have a motion for Diana Finnegan, and a first and second. Do we have any further Board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is to take a nomination for second Vice Chair.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to nominate.
Second. We have a motion and a second to nominate Janet Barrick for second Vice Chair. Any further Board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Oh, you get to run the timer.
I get to learn to run the timer.
No, I'm good, thanks.
You sure?
Yeah, I don't think that was my normal chair, anyway.
What's that? Yes, yes.
Somebody never moves.
Why, you're fighting for that chair one day. Ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate you being here. I thank you for your entrusted vote to nominate me as Chair. I hope I don't disappoint you. I know that we have big things to do. The county is growing, and there's a lot to be done, and we are going to get to business. So with that said, the next on our agenda is to approve the agenda. Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
There's additional items to go over.
Ooh, take it away.
All right. Just additional information, E1B is just the recommended action was updated to seek approval to execute the agreement once the agreement is received and approved by the County Attorney's Office. E8, just additional information, we received a waiver and release of liability signed by the College of Central Florida's president. And H2, the Med Fleet presentation has been canceled, and we were asked to pull H4, the Mandatee Protection Zone. We're going to bring that back to the Board on December the 10th. And lastly, just additional information, N1 is just the Florida Association of Counties Legislative Day is going to be March 19, 2025. We just added that to the list of conferences. That's all I have.
Motion maker, Commissioner Kennard, could you amend your motion, please?
I was the second.
Oh, you did? Okay, I apologize.
Also amend my motion?
All right, so we have, did you have something, Clerk?
Yes, I have a requesting clarification. He stated there was additional information for H2, but it's canceled. Does that mean we're pulling it?
We are pulling H2.
Okay.
That's correct.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan and a second by Commissioner Kennard. Any further decision or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is proclamations.
Motion to approve, item B1.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kennard, we have a second by Janet Barrick. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, please meet us down front. Those representing Diabetes Awareness Month, if you could please come forward. Whereas the Florida Department of Health in Citrus County are leaders in diabetes prevention and education efforts. In the United States, 37.3 million adults have diabetes, and another 96 million individuals have prediabetes and are at risk for developing type 2 diabetes. And whereas diabetes affects Americans of all backgrounds and ages and is considered a chronic and debilitating illness. And whereas uncontrolled diabetes puts people at risk for serious medical complications including premature death, vision loss, cardiovascular disease, kidney disease, and dialysis, nerve damage, and amputation of toes, feet, or legs. And whereas proper nutrition, physical activity, diabetes screening for at-risk groups, and self-management education are the cornerstones of treatment and prevention of type 2 diabetes and can effectively improve outcomes. And whereas Diabetes Awareness Month is an opportunity for Citrus County citizens to unite, to increase individual and community awareness, changes lives, and stops the diabetic epidemic. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida does hereby designate the month of November 2024 as Diabetes Awareness Month, executed this 19th day of November 2024.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Pagan. I'm with the Health. I'm a health educator with the Florida Department of Health here in Citrus County. I want to thank the Board of County Commissioners for taking the time to acknowledge this proclamation. Diabetes is one of the most common chronic conditions in the United States affecting approximately 38.4 million adults, with incidence rising to 29% in those ages 65 years or older. Complications associated with diabetes can include kidney disease, retinopathy, neuropathy, and stroke and heart attack. Diabetes continues to be a public health concern worldwide, placing a significant burden on healthcare systems. Citrus County, Florida, is disproportionately affected by diabetes, with 16.7% of adults being diagnosed compared to 11.7% statewide. Education and prevention are key to getting Citrus County residents healthier. Community-based interventions have proven effective in preventing and managing chronic disease. Our diabetes, I'm sorry, community-based interventions, which is why Florida Department of Health, Citrus County, holds free eight-week diabetes education courses for residents. We've had over 100 Citrus County residents complete the course. Additional education, getting regular screenings, increased awareness, and support from our local government are crucial in working together to improve the health and well-being of all residents. Thank you again to the Citrus County BOCC for their continuous support.
Next on our agenda today is the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, just for my annual few words, can we pull EC, or excuse me, pull C2 off of the consent agenda?
For discussion?
Yes, for discussion, please.
Motion approved, C1 and C3.
We have, we have a motion by Commissioner Kennard and a second. What about the rest?
It's C1 through seven.
C1 through seven, sorry.
Second.
Chair.
Thank you.
I believe there's 12 right there. We do have 12.
And can we pull C2 with your motion, Commissioner Kennard?
What's that?
It's, it's C, it's C1 through 12, but can we pull C2 with your motion for discussion?
Yes, I'll amend my motion to reflect that.
Madam Clerk, do you have that? So we have a motion by Kennard. Can we have a second on that with the amendments?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Finnegan. We're pulling C2 for further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, 5-0. Commissioner Finnegan.
Well, annually, I say on C2, I don't think that we should have a fixed monthly mileage allowance because we shouldn't get paid to go to work. And I understand that if people go out of town and we have appointments, I think that we should just submit our mileage as needed and not take it as a monthly allowance just based on principle. So I don't know how the Board feels about it, but that's my annual discussion of this item.
Motion to approve, C2.
Second.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I believe we forgot to ask for public input on the first motion. All right. Maybe go back and see if anyone has any public input on that. Can we finish C2 and then go back? Yes. Okay. So we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Davis and a second by Kennard on mileage, and that's to, and Madam Attorney, is this, there's a motion, but is this based on, is your motion based on?
Motion to approve.
So you're not agreeing with what?
Correct.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further Board comment? Do we have anyone from the public that would like to speak on this motion? Seeing none?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just, I just wanted to say, I completely understand where Commissioner Finnegan is at on this. We all certainly serve on a number of boards, and that option for submitting your mileage is there. I certainly don't do it. I take it as part of my job to go to these meetings and so forth, but I think having that, having that option out there is, not only is it longstanding, I think it's, I think it's the right thing to do as an option for people to help cover those travel expenses and so forth, so. I'm going to support it, but I completely understand where you're at.
Just, just so we're all on the same page, I'm not against having mileage reimbursement, and I agree with the point 445, but the option to not submit mileage and to take a monthly stipend, that's what the second part of the motion is. So my point was, if you use mileage, go ahead and submit it and get reimbursed for it if you need it. I don't do that, but I'm okay with anybody that does. I just don't like that you can fill out a form that's in our backup, and then you just take a set amount every single month, whether you use it or not. So that, that's the point I make annually.
Any further Board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
You said aye?
Well, nay, I agree with.
Okay, so we have three yays and two nays. You have that? Thank you. Motion carries. We are now at our first open to the public. Madam Chair, sorry to interrupt. Oh, I'm sorry, we got to go back and do open to the public on C1 through 12.
12.
Would anybody like to speak on items C1 through 12? Seeing none, we're going to close open to the public and move on to open to the public. Would anybody like to speak in open to the public? I was going to say, ooh. I think everybody knows the rules. Address the Chair, please fill out a green card, and you have three minutes unless you have, you're registered as a group, and then you have five minutes to speak. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Deb Spence from Crystal River.
Is there a new board here? Last year when I stood before the new board, I said a prayer for you for I had a lot of faith and a lot of confidence in what might happen. I have to say that I'm not overly faithful, or I don't have a lot of faith in this board. And I wait to see what your agendas are going to look like. I think that there's some agendas that don't line up with the county. But I think that there's two big areas that we need to look at this year, that you need to look at this year. One of them is insurance, and that includes housing, automobile and medical. And I understand that you don't control those areas yourself. But seeing as we are all on the Republican committees, I suggest that you use some of your power to go to the state and say that we need relief in this area and all three of those. We have insurance companies that are just blanketly denying everything for auto claims, for health insurance. We've had seven thousand houses that have been, or housing units that have been affected because of the storms. And several of those have had problems trying to collect on the insurance. There's nobody to go to. There's no in-between person at the state level to advocate for the citizens. And we need that very desperately. The other area we need to look at is housing. We've had an enormous amount of housing that has been turned over to Airbnbs and vacation rentals. In my, my street alone, there's six houses and two of them have been turned over to Airbnbs. It destabilizes the neighborhoods and it needs to stop in some way, to be controlled. If you buy a house in, in this county, there's a certain tax rate that's assessed to you. If you live in the house or if you're a veteran, you get an exemption. Why can't we have those that are for rentals pay more taxes for destabilizing the neighborhoods? We need to do something. During the disaster, I had a friend who was out of housing. He had no electricity. And I called my two neighbors with Airbnbs and they would not house this person. So they're not there to help us. They're there to collect the money and to run away. And this county needs to look at it. You also need to look at the possibility of changing some of the zoning laws to allow secondary houses, ADUs, trailers to go on large properties. I know this is forbidden at this point, but you could increase the housing units very quickly by changing some of the zoning laws. And I look forward to hearing some discussions from this board on that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Commissioner Barrett, I don't know if I should congratulate you or give you my condolences, but welcome. I would like to kind of say a few things. Commissioner Cannard, I know you feel that sometimes I pick on you, but there's a reason for that. I take objection to the fact that you keep bringing up thirty-five thousand dollars assessment, but it was brought to your attention that we also pay taxes. And as far as I'm concerned, I think my tax dollars, as well as my neighbors, justify having that first assessment. I get the fact that this is going to cost a lot of money and I don't think at this time I have to be in agreement. An MSBU is unattainable for us because we just can't afford it. I want to also kind of ask about your distribution of your tourist dollars. I went on to the site trying to figure out which district gets the most amount of money for what they, the tourists are actually getting. And I noticed that Crystal River, Homo Sassa, got quite a bit of money from the board here. Ninety-eight thousand, if I'm correct, for Monkey Island that houses three spider monkeys. I happened to go there and I was really sad for the monkeys because I think it's inhumane. I don't think that everyone is getting really their tax dollars worth a spider monkey, okay? Eric Landon, I believe, made a statement saying that there were seven thousand homes that were affected from the hurricane. Two thousand probably would need to be condemned or demolished. And I looked at the population. Homo Sassa only has two thousand sixteen residents as of, as of two thousand twenty-two. Crystal River, as of two thousand twenty-two, has three thousand four hundred and eighty-four. So I'm not understanding who was affected by this storm. Also, if these homes are condemned, what's going to happen to these residents? Is this another form of land acquisition for a wealthy developer to come in and build? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, please.
Terri Webber Nellis, IV4. Just a couple of things. I think I'll leave Commissioner Cannard alone this time. As far as the MSBU goes, it's just taken Citrus County too long, too many years. You've drug your feet, so if an MS.
Excuse me, ma'am.
My time's still ticking.
Yeah. Can you stop her time, please? Okay.
Okay.
All right, go ahead.
Should I go?
Thank you.
You're welcome. So it's driven the cost through the roof. Any MSBU now would bankrupt IV4. And Commissioner Finnegan said that she would like to hear from the homeowners out there to get kind of a consensus. My vote is no on an MSBU. It's just reached a point of like no return. As far as Commissioner Bayes goes, oh, do I call you chairwoman now?
No.
Okay.
Just Bayes is fine.
I know you like to get things done and you want solutions. My suggestion would be to get it back to the AG and to hold, hopefully hold the bad actors accountable. But I also feel that Citrus County needs to own up to what, the, the part that they've played in this because you can't keep pointing the finger at everybody but Citrus County. So I would say that. I would also encourage you to listen to the residents. We've done quite a bit of research and I don't really feel that you're getting accurate information from, not all, but some staff members. I just, it's not coinciding with our research. And I also suggest that you take Mr. Howard's advice, and I had said this at another meeting, and hire a land use attorney. I don't know if I should say permanently or just to help you look at this, but you really need, or Citrus County really needs, a strong land use attorney. And Commissioner Barrett, welcome aboard.
Thank you, Ms. Weber. Next, please.
Afternoon, Commissioners and the public at large. My name is Mark Roehrig and as I spoke at the last meeting about the BTC Community Center, it's a bicycle trail community center. I was bringing forth the, the idea that Floral City could use a community center for social activities as well as an exercise place and do a lot of, just a, just a real nice balanced place to be right in the middle of our city, and I found the perfect building. So today I just want to explore a few things. What we're talking about is community and in both realms, the dog shelter who now uses the building for storage is of course a great community. I've said we've got to have that and also exercise for the community. So trying to find an equilibrium between what's going on there now and how we can get in. So some of the things I was exploring was, as you had mentioned, Mr. Cannard, Commissioner Cannard, about the linear parks and the impact fees and how they may be used. Also, I could maybe pay rent in advance for like a year to give the money to, towards finding a place, define auxiliary storage. Maybe grants could come to mind or, or the community at large likes to give to the shelter a lot for different reasons. So maybe someone has a place to actually give them, it's just a short time before the actual La Canto, I believe, animal shelter is completed, maybe a year or two. So these are things I just want to hear you, your talk about today and I thank you for your time. I know that I'm excited about the center. Again, I have all the equipment, which is twenty pieces of commercial equipment and weightlifting, twenty-five hundred pounds of free weight gym equipment and the mirrors and the flooring. And everything that goes in the building is there and ready to go. And I have many needs to, to bring community light on, on it. Oh, my phone number, if anybody would like to call me, I would also look into a partnership. Three, five, two, eight, six, zero, six, zero, four, zero. And my name is Mark Roehrig, R-O-E-H-R-I-G. And we're talking about the Floral City Community Center. Thank you for your time. And I've got done early today.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I doubt that I even need this microphone. But my name is Reverend Anna Marie Clark, C-L-A-R-K. I live at fifty-five fifteen South Calgary. That spells C-A-L-G-A-R-Y Terrace, Inverness, Florida, thirty-four, four, five, two. I got a problem with the neighbors over there. They have moved in and destroyed my property. And I'm a second house in on Calgary. These people came up here from Miami and they have literally destroyed my pool. They destroyed my yard. They have got trees that's hanging over my, on my roof, ruining my roof. And I understand that there's a law that protects the trees and, and the yards. But under Calgary versus Hepner, it only lists so much. Property has got to be cleaned up and I'm expecting you commissioners to do something about this and get that property cleaned up. They've had the kids playing out in the street. They have about twenty, twenty-five people living over there. They moved a huge trailer in to face my property and code enforcement came out and got that moved. We've got a mess at, I believe that address is fifty-five oh three Calgary Terrace. But I want you commissioners to know what's going on over there. If you can do something to help me, I appreciate it. If you can't, I got to take it wherever I have to take it. Again, my phone number here, three, five, two, five, oh, three, two, three, eight, six. I want help and I thank you commissioners. You're doing a good job.
Thank you, Mrs. Clark. Next, please.
I'm sure I don't need the microphone either. Yeah, you know, Commissioners, you know, Cannard, Barrett, Davis.
Sir, could you tell, state your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mike Engels, twelve Highwood Path, Homo Sassa. To the Commissioners that were sworn in today, congratulations. To all of you, thank you for your service to the county. I'm sure it's often a thankless job. A couple of smirks there, probably well deserved. I was going to speak regarding H4, which I understand is being tabled until December. When I read through the packet, the agenda in the packet, frankly, as a layman, I had no idea what it was saying. I don't know if you're looking to expand zone, manatee zones, if you're looking to expand the timing on the zones, or if it's simply just replacing signs. I thought it was well-educated, but I couldn't figure it out from the information, the legalese that was in there. Having said that, hopefully this isn't a solution looking for a problem. The number of, the FWC reported manatee mortality from boat strikes for this year is four. Zero is obviously the ideal. We're never going to get there, unfortunately. That's down from previous years. Last year it was nine. It's not an overwhelming problem at the moment. Expanding it, replacing signs, I really don't have a problem with it, but hopefully it's not just the solution looking for a further problem. Thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else for open to the public? Seeing none, we'll close open to the public. Board members, do you have any comments?
I'll chime in briefly. Mike, you hit the nail on the head. It is just replacing, just replacing signs, trying to get back to where we were before FWC incredibly came in and moved the signs without addressing it with anyone. And I believe it was pulled today to clarify the ordinance itself, the, the verbiage, the pictorals in there, stuff like that. So it'll come back in a much more clean, much more understandable. There's, there's nothing new happening there, other than trying to just get back to where we were before FWC moved the signs. The VRBOs and Airbnbs in the neighborhoods, nothing, absolutely nothing is going to happen with that. The state preempts us on those. And really, the only area in the county that's protected from that is the city of Crystal River. They were grandfathered in and prohibiting the short-term rentals. I've spoken with our legislative delegation in the past and that went nowhere. They understand the problem, but it's not going anywhere in the state legislature. And the Calgary Terrace problem, that sounds like another code compliance case. So I would assume that, that report needs to be made and code compliance officer go out and take a look at the junkyard conditions.
Anyone else?
Hello.
Commissioner Finnegan.
I don't, put my glasses on. I'll try to take a minute earlier. To Ms. Spence, the good news, I know Commissioner Cannard addressed half of that. The board did talk about extra housing in Citrus County and we did some changes for accessory dwelling units, which right now on any property, you can have an accessory dwelling unit. But for larger properties, you can have larger structures and we have ordinances for that. And that was just changed maybe a matter of months ago. Dr. Kubitschek, you were here for Mr. Landon's presentation. Seven thousand homes affected, twenty-five homes approximately were looked at for substantial damage and the letters are going out, but my last information is maybe only a hundred of those houses would affect, were affected by substantial damage and that can be contested still with the county. Mr. Roehrig, thank you. We're still looking into that. I love your passion to help our community and appreciate you very much. Staff's still checking into that. Calgary Terrace, I assume you'll direct her or?
We've already taken care of that with, directed her to code compliance.
Fantastic. And Mr. Engel and Homo Sassa, yes, that was pulled. I was asking a lot of questions about that too because I lost where he went, if he's still here. There you are. Because probably like you, when I'm reading words and it's X amount of past the northwest quadrant of the whatever and Homo Sassa was in there as well as Crystal River, don't feel bad. Nobody under, up here understands that. Nobody's a surveyor. And then I was assured that Homo Sassa's not changing. It was just Crystal River because FWC removed those signs and they are putting them back, but I like to know exactly and precisely what I'm voting on. So that agenda item is pulled and some maps and some things. They sent me some maps and it was of the Crystal River area and it wasn't Homo Sassa, but then I was assured Homo Sassa didn't change. So you were right to look at that and question that and thank you. We appreciate it. And that's all, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis.
Well done to the two of you already addressed, so I won't belabor any of those points. I'll just address Dr. Kubitschek since I chair the Tourist Development Council. The lion's share of our tourism is driven to manatees. That's just naturally because that's our unique selling proposition versus other counties. Since taking over as chair, I've made a enormous effort and the staff has as well to direct a lot more marketing dollars to the other areas of the county to distribute the tourists better and that's actually working pretty well. What you seem to be referring to is the fifth penny. Twenty percent of our tourist development dollars can be used for capital improvement that benefits tourism. And so yes, a lot of that's gone to the west coast. However, there is a really large project that the city of Inverness has proposed that I am super excited about, but we're going to have to save up for it. And we did also support the, their bid to become the Christmas city of Florida. My apologies to Mayor Bob. I can't remember exactly what he was calling it, but he's probably going to hear about this. But we did help support that beautiful tree that they put up last year. So the other eighty percent of the dollars can only be used for marketing to tourists. So none of that money can come into the general fund or do anything except what is prescribed by the state. Hopefully that helps.
I listened to the tourist thing. The, the, the district I am in has over ten thousand people as a population. That's more than Crystal River and Homo Sassa together. So when you complain about tourist dollars, I'm not going to complain because they're being spent where the tourists actually visit. We are the stepchild in my area because we don't have the tourists coming to visit. But we will be getting them because now we have the shopping mall. So things, you know, may be changing, but tourists.
But tourist dollars are from tourists. And they're to be used for the tourists. They don't go to the general fund. And that's just, you know, the way it is. The Calgary lady, I'm gonna suggest, and I don't think she's here, but you need to call code compliance on a daily basis. Because the more you call, the more times they're gonna actually come out to see you. And the more times they come to see you, the more times you're gonna see the offense. And that's about the only way you're gonna get a positive reaction.
Well, thank you for those comments. I don't really wanna beat this up, but I will go in on the insurance. The Florida Department of Insurance is under the CFO of our state. And it's highly, highly regulated. And I would suggest that if you have a problem with your insurance or your carrier, that you reach out and send a letter to Jimmy Petronas's office, the CFO of the state of Florida. For those that would be interested in hearing more about it, the Florida State Chamber is having a conference on the insurance matters as they affect the state of Florida. I believe the dates are December 3rd and 4th. So if you have interest and wanna know what's going on, that would be the place where you're most likely gonna get the best information as it relates to insurance for the state. Thank you all. So we're moving on to regular business. Ma'am, I'm sorry, time certains. Jeez. Really botching this up, huh?
You're doing great.
It's your first one. All right, we're gonna go to time certains. And we had a 115. That's the Citrus County Detention Facility update by Warden Snow.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jason Snow, Citrus County Detention Facility. Just to give you an update on staffing, we are still on track with where we were last month. It's been a few short weeks. So starting with the academy, we start on track with 10 to graduate in December. That's looking pretty good. We've already started a class set up for January to go to the academy. So that's 13 that we have lined up to go to the academy in January. We just hired on six new hires several weeks ago. They will hit the floor next week after their OJAT. We have eight more in line for our December class. We're attempting to get more. With the holidays, however, it is very difficult to get new hires in the door. As a matter of point, we already have 15 lined up for the January class versus our December class. So we're hoping to prompt them to get in the door. Our staffing did dip 5% as far as our posts are concerned this last month. And the reason for that is because our medicals and our constant watches, they were very significant this last month. And just for awareness, for the new Commissioner, when we staff the facility, even if we were to staff at 100%, we never overstaff the facility. And the reason for that is because we have what we call, we consider pull posts. So we have posts in the facility that we would normally fill that when a med run goes out, or we put somebody on constant watch, we pull from them posts. So when the, when a monitor evaluates our rosters, when we pull those posts, we don't get credit for those. That's why you see that 5% dip this last month, because of the significance of all that happened with the med runs and the constant watches. So that's where we're at at this time. Another thing is that we have been looking at was whether or not we're actually getting credit for some of the positions. We found out that our unit staff, our case counselors and those type positions, we haven't been getting credit for. So hopefully this next month, when we report out, we'll see a pretty good jump in our numbers as far as that's concerned. And we started meeting with the master scheduler to make sure our reporting process is a lot better to the monitor, so that we're getting credit for those posts that we haven't been getting credit for in the past. So, questions?
Board members, do you have any questions, comments?
How close are you to getting over 60% on a daily basis?
We're pretty significantly close to that. I think this last time, we were approximately 65%. I'm more than happy for the monitor to correct that, but I think that was our discussion. We were right about 65% consistently. Our discussion the other day was, we're looking more towards 75% this month. So hopefully that trend continues.
Commissioner Brad, you finished?
Yeah.
Thank you for your update.
Yes, ma'am.
Moving on to H3, plat vacation, PB 2024-00002, Empire Construction. Excuse me, I know Empire Construction said they were gonna be here today. Are they here?
Here.
Okay.
Sorry, I thought they were coming up here. I'm Samantha Townsend, and I'm with Empire Construction. This is the first time doing this, so I don't really know. But we're requesting vacation of the easement on our property. It's not being used by any of the utilities, nor has anybody used these at all since we've started. So we just need to vacate that for our house. Yeah, I guess. Yeah.
Let me go ahead?
Okay.
Do you need to read the resolution or no? Is this a resolution? All right, this is a request to vacate the six-foot drainage and utility easement lying on the south lot line of Lot 13, Block 1641 of Citrus Springs, Unit 26. And there's the easement highlighted in yellow. They are, it's a plat of easements on every lot that's out there. And on the left side is what actually was permitted, where it is 12 foot off that property line. But you can see on the right side, the survey shows it actually was shifted over into construction. So it's a three-foot setback with placing it in the easement. The applicant has provided all the utility company letters. They have no concerns. Staff has no concerns and recommends approval. Oh, and sorry, one more picture. This is the location of the easement. You would never know it's here. Board members.
I live in Citrus Springs. And that lot, and that area is not developed yet. So I feel that this is a little bit premature to be giving easements of property. And I'm not for it.
It's still in the property lines.
Wait, wait just a second. Are you finished?
Hmm.
Okay. Any other board member? Anybody else? Now you can do your rebuttal.
I mean, it's still in the property lines. So this, this actually, this area here is for utilities to be able to run pipes in if they were going to. However, Citrus County doesn't use the, utilize those areas for the utilities. They do it in the front of the properties. So it'll never become utilized for these, for the pipes.
I still don't agree, because-
Let me recognize. Okay, now go.
I still do not agree with what you're saying. This is undeveloped currently, and it will maybe take 10 years to develop. And at that point in time, it may be used. So I would like to see it stay the way it's supposed to. We are a bird sanctuary out there. We are trees and whoever builds. To me, it is not proper to be doing this at this point in time. It's too early.
All right, we're gonna close. Close the, open the public hearings. You can have a seat.
Okay.
Do we have anyone that would like to address the board on this issue? Anyone from open to the public? Seeing none, we're gonna close the public hearing.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to approve plat vacation PB 2024-00002, Empire Construction. And authorize the chairman to execute the resolution and record the resolution in public records.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Davis and a second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any further board discussion?
Yes. Commissioner Barrett, I understand your position on it. But we've gotten, we've gotten letters from utility companies saying they have no use for it. I believe that their planning goes out, exceeds 10 years. And if they're okay with giving up the easement, then I think that I'm fine with it as well. Just wanted to acknowledge your position, but where I was coming from and supporting it.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
We have a 4-1 vote. Let's see, H4 is next. Conduct a public hearing on an ordinance of Citrus County pertaining to manatee protection zone.
No, we pulled that.
Oh, I'm sorry. We did. All right, so now we're gonna go back to regular business. So we have E bids, E1.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve E1A through D.
Second.
Who did the first and who did the second?
I made the motion.
Finnegan, okay.
And then it was, it was a tie for Kennard and Davis.
Davis. All right, I'll give it to you, Davis. So we have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan, a second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any board or any public input? Seeing none, any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carries 5-0.
Madam Chair, motion to approve E2A and B.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Davis, a motion, a second by Commissioner Kennard. Do we have any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Madam Chair, motion to approve E3A and B.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Davis and a second by Commissioner Barrett for E3A and B. Any public input? Seeing none, call for the vote. All, anyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Madam Chair, motion to approve E4A and B.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Davis and a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Any public input on E4? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Motion to approve E5.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Davis and a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Motion to approve E6?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan on E6 and a second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public input on E6? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Motion to approve E7.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Davis for E7 and a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries 5-0.
Motion to approve E8A and B.
We have a motion by Commissioner Davis for E8A and B.
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public input? All those in favor signify by saying-
Okay, wait a second. Do we get a chance to say something?
Yes, ma'am.
I went through this and I heard the backups that were given to me. And I don't like the chance that they, they're not gonna do the indemnification at the college for the students if they're working on a patient and something were to happen. That would make the county responsible. And I can't see where we should be putting the county in that position for, you know, financial responsibility if something were to happen. Now, I do agree that we need to have these students. But the fact that the college is now backing off on what it used to do, okay? Because it used to indemnify. And now all of a sudden, they're not gonna indemnify. To me, we need to look a little bit more into it before we agree to this.
Would, did you have something, Commissioner Kennard?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and chime in. I completely understand. I had this discussion before the meeting today. My concern is that this is a feeder program for our, our EMTs, our paramedics. And if this, if this is the, is the cost or is the price of continuing this program, then unfortunately, even though there is a risk, I think that risk there is small, I think we've gotta do what's necessary to keep that program going so that we can continue to hire the personnel into, into our EMS service.
Can I rebuttal?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I do see the risk, small as it may be. HCA saw the risk and hired somebody. It cost them 25 million. Now, I don't wanna put the county at that risk. That's where I'm standing up for the county itself and saying, hey, go back to the joint board with the college, get them to do whatever. We do need the feeder program. I agree. We need more than just this one. We also need it for the nurses and everything else in our other facilities, not just the EMS. But I can't see putting our county at risk of anything like that.
Madam Chair? Commissioner Finnegan, you're recognized.
Commissioner Barrett, I understand your concerns. I had the same concerns. But after speaking to the attorney and really digging into the contract, I realized that the student and the college is taking a risk for the student. Before, we would have that indemnification for the patient. But I trust our chief is running a good program. There is no reason, it makes the risk even smaller, why a student would be with a patient unsupervised. So I can understand, maybe from the other viewpoint, that if a student is there, and if a student, you know, if a patient is not in in the correct mental health at the time, and maybe acts out or something happens to the student, the college is prepared to take care of that. But as far as the patients are concerned, we are responsible for those patients. And a student is there to learn and maybe do some things, but under the guidance of our people that are teaching them. So obviously, for the county, the other way is better. But the risk is even smaller when you look at it that way, and it's a good program. And I understand where the other party's coming from. So I'm gonna vote in favor. But I do understand where you're coming from.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Kennard.
Just to respond to a comment that Commissioner Barrett made. HCA, I don't believe enjoys sovereign immunity like the county does. So we're not going to get that. If, if something were to go badly wrong, the county's not going to get hit with that $25 million judgment against it. So is there risk? Yeah, there is some risk. But I've been assured in discussions prior to the meeting that it's, that it's minimal. And the importance of keeping the program going exceeds that, that little bit of risk that we're taking on.
Do you have anything?
No, I think Commissioner Kennard made all my points.
So we do have a motion by Holly Davis and a second by Commissioner Kennard. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-1. All right, you guys are quick. So we are moving on to outstanding commissioner item, commission items.
Veronica, please come forward.
Good afternoon, Chair, Commissioners. Just have a few updates for you on today's outstanding commission items list. We do have the scoring of our vendor responses for the FY 2425 road resurfacing completed. So those will be coming forward to you shortly. For the 20- For the 2324 fiscal year, District Three's repaving is still in process. There was a small delay due to the storms last month, but we are trying to get back on track with our vendor there. Duncan Field has reopened, so while the construction is not completed on that yet, we do have drivers on the road again. Betts Farm, we have a PDC hearing set for January 16th. And Watson Road, we did some review with the Economic Development Director, and upon looking at the categorical exclusion from the FAA, we would propose an alternate location be used based on the stipulations of that categorical exclusion. So Watson Road may be something that we want to look at, at the January strategic retreat.
Thank you.
That's all I've got.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Kennard.
Yes, I would like to, we got some, we got some great news last week regarding the Barge Canal Boat Ramp that both FWC and was it the National Marine Fisheries Service, I think it is, both signed off on the boat ramp, and that it looks like the Army Corps of Engineer, Engineers is very close to issuing the permit for it. That's, that's a project that has been talked about since back when, in your first term. I believe, I believe your board built the road down to that area where the boat ramp's supposed to be. I'd like to see that project added to this list once that Army Corps permit is, is issued. That's a project that needs to get some gasoline behind it and get moving. That's, what is that? Sixteen years?
Twelve years, yeah.
It's time to get some movement on as soon as we get that permit in hand. The other thing that, that I would like to have an update on, I'm not sure that it necessarily belongs on this list, but our offshore artificial reefs, our offshore and inshore. I know it's, it's been a year ago now, maybe, that we, we decided, I believe the board authorized maybe 11 or 12 different locations for inshore reefs. I know that we also applied to the Army Corps to expand the footprint of our offshore reef. We did get that, that authorization to do that. We've got the material sitting up on the Barge Canal and DEP property. That's another project that has been talked about for a long time on this board. We, I would like to see some, something happen there. I'd like to see some movement. You know, where are we going with it? Let's get that material offshore where we've got the authority to do it, and then find out what's going on with these inshore locations.
Great comments.
If I could just respond to that, we do have both of those projects being tracked under different categories, and I will make sure that you get an update on both of those, including the Barge Canal added to the outstanding.
Fantastic, thank you.
Commissioner Kennard, I love your idea there and seeing that it's making some headway on the boat ramp. I've had a couple of conversations with Ken Cheek about what it would take to get utility line up there. I think it's gonna be desperately needed at some point in the near future. But what, I know when I was on the board before, we actually talked about potentially having a marina there for, for dry storage. Is that something that you think is worth taking another look at?
Well, I think, you know, you're gonna have, you're gonna have the Coast Guard there. We're gonna have a very large boat ramp there. This is, this is an area that I think there needs to be, we need to broaden the discussion a bit. Certainly if utilities get there, then that, the discussion of a dry storage marina makes sense. Getting utilities up there, again, a regional discussion. Remember when we talked about our legislative priorities? We need to look at what is of regional benefit. And this, this ramp, when I first came on the board, I was trying to kill this ramp. I wanted to move, I wanted to move the entire initiative down to one of our rivers. Thankfully, that did not happen, and we're now getting very, very close to making this a reality. Getting utilities up there would, could, and I believe likely would be a game changer economically for, for the northwest part of the county.
I do believe that there's a study probably on a shelf collecting dust somewhere that we had back in the day, had someone take a look at, at off, or dry storage. So maybe we can get staff to dig that out, kind of look at it, see what the viability of it would be today, and maybe resurrect another conversation on it. Anything else?
I think that's fantastic news, Commissioner Kennard.
Yeah.
I would like to actually get the DOD money, to be honest with you. The Department of Defense, I think with the Coast Guard there, what an opportunity for them to contribute some finances for the utilities.
That's better news.
All right. Let's see, Mr. Howard, you're up.
Nothing to report.
Think up something.
Something, but obviously a lot of good stuff going on. I think this was good news. I always kid around here and say that when I got here, you told me about the canal and about the alligators, and they had told me that all the permits were in place for the Barge Canal. So we know that, and it's nothing, nobody's fault, but we're, what doesn't get tracked doesn't, you know, it has to be measured to get things done. So we're seeing a lot of good efforts happening. Our federal lobbyist is actually helping us as well tremendously, and staff's doing a great job. So we're excited about going into 2025, our strategic planning session, which will get some of these top priorities going and continue to move them forward. So we're excited. We're gonna do a performance review in January of all the good stuff that's happening in 23 and 24 and going into 25. You're gonna be amazed at all the milestones that staff's been working really hard at doing on your behalf. So that's some good news. Also got some good news. I think we're gonna get an increased bond rating potentially coming up. I'm hearing good news about that, which is music to my ears as well. So that's, again, good, good, good things happening with this board and all the good stuff that everybody's doing, so.
Very good, thank you. Let's see, so on to N, we have additional information that was added, just I think that was brought up at the beginning of the meeting on FAC Legislative Day, March 19th. We need to approve the board, or the board needs to approve the proposed regular Board of County Commissioner meetings and dates for 2025.
I have something to say about that, if I may, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Finnegan.
Had it in some of my notes here, but the November dates. I had it written somewhere, but one, if my memory serves me correct, was November 10th, which is the day before Veterans Day and the Marine Corps Birthday, which there's a lot of Veterans Day activities also on that day. And the other one was two days before Thanksgiving. I'm not sure why we wouldn't just shift those each up a week. That would be my suggestion.
So go to the third, November 3rd and the 17th?
I believe so.
I have no problem with that.
Seems to make sense.
It makes a lot of sense to me.
Will there be an, I, I don't, is there an election?
No.
No, no elections.
Yes, that's what, yeah, that's what I have. November, I think it's November, is it the 3rd or the 4th?
4th, I'm sorry.
Right, November 4th and 18th.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
Madam Chair. I have two dates that I have a conflict with. We can either leave the meeting dates as they are. I'll just, I will be out of town for those two meetings. First one is January 28th, and the second one is April 22nd.
Mr. Howard.
Is there a reason? We've got our strategic planning retreat on Tuesday. I would assume that would be done in the morning. Could we have a meeting that afternoon of the 21st? No, wait a minute, I'm sorry. That won't work anyway. I'll be out of town then as well. Sorry about that. I will just, I'll scratch that one. I will be out of town on the 28th. On April 22nd. No, I take that back. Let me, let me see here. Let's, if, if nobody's opposed, can we move our regular meeting to the 20, January 21st? And then the April 22nd meeting, I'll just have to miss that.
Commissioner Kennard, didn't you say that you were gonna be out the 21st also?
Nope, nope. I will be fine on the 21st.
So you wanna have the strategic planning in the morning and then go to this in the afternoon?
Yeah.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So then would we do them both here? Could we switch the strategic planning to here? That would make more sense.
Let's travel for the clerk's office, too.
Yep, and maybe wrap it up then, maybe a little earlier than noon, so everyone can take a lunch break, and then maybe not have 501s that day? I'm not a roll. And then maybe. And then maybe something else.
I would never have them if I could, so.
Eric, do you know by chance, is, are there any 501s for that? You don't know.
Would they be scheduled already, Eric? No, I'm behind you saying this.
All right, so we would scratch the 28th completely.
Uh, scratch, scratch, I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion unless anybody has an issue with it. I'll make a motion that we approve the dates with changes of moving January 21st, or January 28th meeting to January 21st. And scratching the June 23rd meeting. And, no, I'm sorry, November, November 10th meeting. We'll have that on November 4th. And then we will have a, we will move the November 25th meeting to, what, was it the 18th?
Yep.
18th.
I second it.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Kennard with the changes, and a second by Commissioner Barrett. And Clerk, do you have all of that? Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to point out, if we're doing the workshop here, that one of the best parts about doing it, and I absolutely agree that it would make sense that we're all in this room, you know, in this building the whole day, but part of the reason we do it in 166 is to have a more relaxed roundtable atmosphere for us instead of lined up in a row. So I don't know if we can set up something similar in the jar or something like that, but it's not a deal breaker, but it's just a point to consider would be more.
Well, the only issue is you have no video taping in the jar room.
Oh, yeah.
So.
And we do have it in 166.
So I would say we just do it here. It's gonna be.
Okay.
Board members, do you, do you guys have any other dates that you know you're gonna be out at this time? Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by say, or we have to have public comment. Is there any public comment? Thank goodness, that was difficult. Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
It looks like there might be one PUD that is scheduled for January. And if you're only having one meeting in January and you don't want the 501, that will have to be moved to February, but I'm only seeing one. Well, I would get, I would say unless it's a very complicated one, maybe we could just do it and get it done. If we're gonna have a long day, we might as well knock it out of the park. It's going before the PDC soon, so we'll know how complicated or not it is.
Okay, Madam Chair.
Yes.
We only have one date in January?
Yes, because you just canceled the 28th.
We just moved that to the 21st. There's one earlier in that I just don't have it for me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we could just put it on the other one in January and still keep it off the 21st?
I, I'm sorry, I was, I started at the 21st and went down. Apologize. Yes, ma'am.
I'm looking at dates for meetings. I always have a conflict between school board and this board. Is there any consideration, probably not for 25, but for 26, to alternate school board and, and BOCC meetings on alternate Tuesdays? Because this has often run over four o'clock, and that meeting starts at four o'clock in the afternoon, so that people can attend both of them and make that request. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, we're closing. Open to the public. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Ms. Lynn, you have anything?
Chair. Yeah. I believe we, we missed J. Go back up to J and start from there.
J K L. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Yes, we did. Janet, I'm so used to looking at it when they're blank. Commissioner Barrett, do you have anything for us today?
Yeah. At this point in time, we, okay, I've been attending these meetings for a long time. And I wanna make some suggestions for the agenda. There used to be a time when people were civil, and one of those things that we used to do was we took a 10-minute comfort break at 3 o'clock, because a lot of people need to get up and walk around, whether they need to use the facilities or not. It is good practice medically that every two hours you get up and walk around and stretch. So I would like to see some of that come back, and that in doing so, we take the presentations for the afternoon and set them for 3:11, so that we would have a 10-minute comfort break from 3:00 to 3:10, and at 3:11 start the presentation, so that this way the presenters are not sitting around and sitting around waiting for us to finish this or that or the other or interfering. Like today, as you saw, you didn't realize we had presentations, and then, you know, you had to go back. But setting it, it used to be, and I'm saying this in good faith, it used to be, and I have copies of previous agendas, where the presentations did not start until after 3 o'clock. And that made it a lot easier for the presenters. It gave time for our consent agenda. It gave time for open to the public. It gave time for, you know, giving our awards. You can start working on E, and you can stop and start E at any point in time. Okay, it's a lot easier to start and stop E and not get people aggravated because you started open to the public and then you had to stop. And I, I think that just for the fact that it would be a comfort break, and if we get going and we get done before 3 o'clock, we don't get a comfort break because then we're gone. But the thing is, I feel that, you know, we need to be kind to all the citizens that have taken the time to come here and to all of the Commissioners. Granted, you have a speaker in the bathroom, but that's not fair to the citizens that have to sit and squirm and have to wait and wait, because they're anticipating what time they're gonna get to talk, and they don't get an actual opportunity to, you know, relieve themselves if they do or get up and walk around. Some people, they just need to get up and walk around to stretch. So that was one thing I, I would like to possibly discuss at a future meeting, like maybe two weeks from now, and give everybody an opportunity to think about that.
Well, Commissioner Barrett, I'm glad you brought that up. I, as you noticed today, we did change around a couple of things on here. We moved the proclamations up. I would like to see, so, and I know it's gonna take a change, I believe an administrative regulation change. I would like to move time certens up right after proclamations. So that way, people that come in, they want, they can have their proclamations, we can have our time certens, and then we can go to our first open to the public after that, because you would still have an opportunity for people to speak on any of the agended items for a presentation, the time certens. So I'm looking for a little bit of a change in our agenda as well, along with I'd also like to see, go back, I know many years ago, we used to do a lot of the bids under consent and potentially move the bids to consent as well. So if anybody has any suggestions or ideas, something that we can direct Mr. Howard and Mrs. Lynn to possibly come back with something to make these changes at our next meeting, that would be great.
Well, I will go ahead and chime in with probably the one that's gonna take, generate the most conversation is I feel that the, the public has an opportunity to comment before each item that we, that we vote on. And then there's an open to the public at the end of the meeting. I don't feel like the, the open to the public at the beginning of the meeting is necessary. There is, we've got an awful lot of staff sitting in the room. We've got an awful lot of folks at times that are here for their time certens, whether they're attorneys or consultants or whoever they might be, that are sitting here waiting sometimes. uh, that are sitting here waiting sometimes, uh, for the, for a lengthy open to the public part of it. When we gavel meeting session or into order, uh, that should be a time that we start moving through, uh, that we start moving through our agenda. Staff is here, a lot of, um, uh, there are a lot of paid folks sitting in the room. That is the time for us to get through the agenda while they're here. Uh, they don't necessarily have to be here at the end of the meeting. It still gives the public plenty of opportunities for input. Uh, but I think if we're going to look at making our meetings run more efficiently, um, then I think that, that is a change. If we're suggesting changes to the agenda, that would be mine.
So your suggestion is to remove the first consent?
Not the consent.
I mean, not the consent, but the, um, open to the public?
Yes. Keep the one at the, at the end of the meeting and of course, public still is invited to give their input before we vote on any agenda item. Uh, but just doing away with that first one.
Board members?
Yes. Um, this has been a conversation at a lot of our FAC commissioner meetings and, and so forth. And I'm struggling to think of many counties that have to general open to the publics. Whether it's at the beginning or at the end, either one. Because I do want to serve the public and whatever is easiest for them. But to your point, Commissioner Cannard, we've got a lot of salaries sitting in this room. And the more efficiently we run this government, the more we can stay one of the lowest tax counties in a low tax state. So if it were, if we were to get rid of the second one and only do the first, and I agree, you're, you, the, what you're talking about is probably better, but we're gonna get backlash on this, I know. The idea would be to please, if you are here to speak on a specific agenda item, speak on that agenda item. If there's a wild card, you know, that's not on our agenda, like the lady that has been devastated by her neighbor, the one that came up in, on Calgary, you know, um, if, or folks that wanna bring up a new idea, um, like Deb Spence looking at changing our normal dates to not be in conflict with the school board. Those are new ideas, those aren't on the agenda. So yes, we need a general open to the public for those. But to respect our tax dollars and to respect all the salaries in the room, we need to run these meetings as efficiently as possible.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Cannard.
Yeah, I, um, uh, if we're, if we're going to consider doing away with one of them, I would suggest doing away with the first one. Um, the public has a number of ways that they can get in touch with us. And I feel like the board has been very responsive, uh, to the public. Either through phone calls, through emails, through setting up meetings. There's lots of ways that, uh, when, when somebody wants to bring a new idea forward, that they can reach us. It doesn't have to be that first public input session of each meeting. Um, also, i- if, uh, if you're holding one at the end of the meeting, that does give people more opportunity. That it's not right in the middle of the day at one o'clock to be able to show up and give, and give their input. If they're here for a specific agenda item, then you're just gonna have to be here and wait till that agenda item gets here. Uh, typically, you know, once, once we get moving through the agenda, unless there's something fairly controversial there, um, we move through our, our agenda, I believe, fairly efficiently. Commissioner Bays can tell you, there was a time when they were here until nine, 10 o'clock on a regular basis. Uh, that's just not the case anymore. So if we're going to get rid of one of them, I would like to see us do away with that first one. Address the agenda items as we move through the agenda and then keep that last public, public, uh, open to the public.
Madam Chair, I happen to agree with you, Commissioner Cannard. I was just saying that I would be open to either one, but I agree with you that the first one would be the one to do away with.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Finnegan.
Um, I do agree with the comfort break. I think that we may get up and, and here, but people, some people don't wanna miss anything and I don't think there's anything wrong with a break. I think if we put times on things, maybe it would help. This was tried before. One, we would have to do, uh, an amendment change because our regulations say that open to the public has to come before, um, our regular business. So that would be something the board would have to vote on, not something that we could just give direction and, and change at the next meeting. Keeping, keeping the first one, the problem is, I think why we got so much backlash before, was that on each agenda item, somebody has to make a motion and then a second. And that already makes the public nervous if they're trying to speak out or for, against a motion. They wanna have an opportunity before it comes up to try to pass it or kill it or whatever they're trying to do, before somebody already has it in their head to make a motion. They, they wanna be heard. So, um, I'm not sure that we could change that to have them speak, on, on the agenda item speak first before the motion. I, I'm not sure if that could happen. Whatever this board decides, for new information at the end, if we do that, maybe if we just put a time on it. Like if you wanna speak it open to the public, this is, this is the time so people aren't missing it or coming too early or, you know, so they can put that in their schedule. But I'm very nervous about taking the first open to the public away for that reason. I think that we could change it and make it to be the first one just about what we're here to talk about today. But again, that, I think that was the backlash before. We don't get an opportunity, meaning we, the people, don't get an opportunity to speak before the board is already halfway there.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barrett.
Initially, when I go back to 2014, 2008, open to the public was 105. It wasn't, there was only one open to the public and it was only at the very, very beginning. Okay? And then we went through, like you said, and we did the proclamations and the bids and things, and it went smoothly. And yes, sometimes the meetings were long. And I was there, she was there. Okay, but the thing is, everything was covered. And people that wanted to speak out, they spoke out first before the proclamations, before anything else. So it did go and it flowed smoothly. Putting the bids back in the way we used to have also made it go smoothly because we went very quickly through them, but we went one at a time. And we also had the, the sentences in there with the bids as to how much was, it got cost. Was it gonna be a grant money? Where was the money coming from? In the last pay, you know, last sentence of what was on the agenda. So people, if they had a comment, they could know a little bit ahead of time. And if they wanted to, you know, ask questions, they could ask questions on that item. I, I really feel that, um, if we're gonna get rid of one of the open to the publics, it should be at the end, not the beginning. And we should maybe go back to right after the beginning, we have the open to the public first. But then when we have a comfort break, after the comfort break is where the presentation should be. Because it would sta- start at 3:11, period, the end. Once we take the 10-minute comfort break, you bring the gavel down, we start writing the presentations. And the people that are presenting have a better chance of getting here, getting a parking space, getting a seat in the audience. Because open to the public will have been completed. And as you know, and you can see from what we have left, once open to the public is done, how many of our citizens say? So the thing is, to me, it would be logical to have a, a three o'clock comfort break, 3:11, come back into session, start writing in with the presentations. And if you wanna get rid of the open to the public at the end, that's fine. That was added by, um, Commissioner Kitchen. He felt people needed a second chance or a bite at the apple. And that was, you know, that was added there. That was not something that was in there initially. So I would like to think about these ideas and come back at our next meeting and discuss it. Or bring up, you know, what we need to do to do it, get it done.
Commissioner Cannard.
Yeah, I would, I'd like to, I'd like for this board to, uh, direct the county attorney to go ahead and advertise a public hearing for our next meeting. Uh, so that we can, we can vote on these issues. I would like, in the, in the interest of making our meetings more efficient, which I believe is what we're talking about here. If you get rid of the public input at the end of it, that doesn't make the meeting more efficient. Uh, we've still got staff and presenters and so forth sitting in the audience, waiting through stuff that has, you know, is, is of little interest to them most of the time, certainly important stuff. And if somebody wants to reach out to us on an important agenda item to them, again, you know, they've got, they've got the ability to email us, to call us. There are lots of ways that they can reach us. Now, maybe the attorney can speak to this. I don't know if it's just a, uh, Roberts Rules of Order or if it's something in our ordinance that would need to be changed to allow public input on an agenda item before there's a motion and a second. As Commissioner Finnegan was suggesting, you know, that they wanna have some input before the board is actually making a motion and a second. Is that something that could be addressed in the ordinance or it has to be a, a motion and a second?
The only thing that the statutes require is that the public have an opportunity to address the board before the board takes action. So if you wanted to, uh, continue the way you're doing now, or if you wanted to let them speak on an agenda item immediately preceding the motion, you could. I'm just not sure logistically. I guess you would just call the item E3 and then say, at that moment, say, is there any public input on E3? I guess you could handle it that way. Yes, it's, it's not a Roberts Rules of Order, it's, it's not a statutory thing, it's a board preference.
So my suggestion would be that, um, the agenda item is mentioned. We can have our board discussion on it, if, if we'd like to do that first, and then take public input on it. And then once you hear the public input, then if a commissioner decides to make a motion on it, then they can make a motion and a second, we can move forward with voting. Um, that would give, that would give the public input after they've heard some, from the board, heard discussion from the board.
Back to the, um, all the salaries in the room, no comfort break, sorry. We just have too many salaries in the room.
10 minutes?
No, because it's gonna be more than 10. Once this whole room gets up and starts milling around and talking, trust me, in the center chair, you can't get them back in their seats and paying attention in 10 minutes. Especially if you need a smoke break, it's gonna take longer. So i- it's just too much salary.
Well.
I've been thinking about starting.
My concern is, is to have a time certain break. I think there's, it, there's no problem in having a comfort break if, if the meeting is going on and we need to do that. But I think to say that we're gonna set a specific time for a break, I mean, it, it, you know, technically speaking, it's 2:37. If we weren't having this discussion, we'd probably be finished with this meeting today before 3:11. So it's very difficult to, to put all these timeframes on something. It's just, I think it was you or somebody made a comment one time. Why would you have your time certens five minutes apart? Because you don't know. I mean, you can't, you cannot judge and gauge the amount of time each one of those are going to take. And so it's, that's the reason they're set on there like that. So, and I think if we just get, get proclamations and we get time certens out of the way, then we can move right into the rest of our business. And again, the, this is, this is a, a, a business meeting. And as Commissioner Cannard has stated, um, when these agendas come out, that is the exact same opportunity that every constituent can, can pick up the phone and call us, they can email us. We can have conversations about the things that are on the agenda, um, and not, and not use the, the business meeting as part of the grievance issue. I mean, there's a way to work through that process and get, get the business done. So, um, I love the idea, I mean, I could go either way, whether, and I don't, not sure if you're saying, um, do away completely with the first, um, open to the public and make every item on what we take a motion or what we would be discussing, let them come up and have input and do away with, um, the first open to the public?
Yes, yeah. Do away with that and you're, you're, you're keeping the public's ability to input on each individual agenda item uh, before a motion is made on that. We'll have our discussion, anybody that has anything to offer on it. If there's no discussion to be had, you know, the budget transfers, stuff like that, that we tend to move through pretty quickly. We open it up, immediately you open it to the public. Any public input on this budget transfer? Nope, and somebody makes a motion. Uh, it's a little bit more cumbersome that way, uh, but I think ultimately, efficiently, it's gonna help us move through the business of the county, um, far more efficiently.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barrett.
If we go to what Commissioner Cannard is suggesting, then I think we need to back up a little and do what used to be done. That if you're gonna do E1, that you have E1 read. And then you can have your public, because then they know what it's all about. E2 read, we used to have that done.
Read the full description of it?
A full description, just like we used to have done. The county administrator always read the full description, including, you know, what, what money in, the little paragraph there. If you're gonna not do the, the discussion and do the way that we're doing now with the motion and the second, and then having the talk, then the public needs to know exactly, not, well, E14, E5, you know.
Yeah.
That's not fair to anybody in the audience and business, you say this is a business meeting, okay? PDC has business meeting and their chair at a certain time says, we are now taking a 10-minute comfort break at every meeting. And he watches the time and at 10 minutes after he did the gavel and he said, okay, and he started, whether everybody was back or not. And it can be done if you want to, so.
And I, again, I don't mind having a comfort break. I guess the issue is I just don't wanna put a time certain on it. I think having a time certain is a bad idea.
That's where I was, that's exactly what I was gonna try and clarify, is that I, I don't think, I don't think Commissioner Bays opposed the idea, it's just putting that specific time on it. So just charging the chair with, you know, when you find that, that point in the, in the agenda, um, and saying, alright, we're gonna take a, a five-minute break or a 10-minute break, something like that. Uh, I would not want it to go any, any longer, uh, than that. And you're right, Randy, when he was sitting in that chair, he would read the entire thing. While I was chair, I asked him to abbreviate it and, you know, can we just read the gist of it? And Randy, you remember, he took it to the far extreme and he said, Q4. And sat there and I'm like, Randy, that's a bit of an abbreviation. Can we just go? So we went from here to here. But anyway, I see what you're saying. I would not be opposed to that. So, uh, it's, um, um, you know, I, I would say probably, uh, either, uh, either the, you know, probably the county administrator to read off what this is. And the board have any discussion about it, open it to the public, close to the public. And then if somebody wants to make a motion on it, you make a motion, second it, and we, and we vote.
Madam, so madam, we all, please, go ahead. Sorry. I, I don't wanna get in the way of y'all's discussion, but, uh, in preparing for today, there wa- there is one other option that I've seen some boards do. Uh, kind of a hybrid of what y'all are saying, uh, just limit the first open to the public to things that are on the agenda. So you open it once and then you don't have to open it each time. Um, just a thought. See, right now, ours says, uh, in the, in the ordinance, which it will require an ordinance amendment, uh, it says that they can address anything within the jurisdiction of the board. So that's very broad and it's, that's why the first open to the public can, can encompass anything. So if you wanted to limit the first open to the public.
No, I don't like, I don't, I, I, I do mean to interrupt you, because I, I don't like that idea because the public, you know, once they start hearing our discussion on a specific agenda item, they're gonna sit out there and go, no, that's wrong. Or they wanna give input on it and they're not gonna have the opportunity then to do that. So I would say, do we, do we need to make a motion or we're just giving, giving you direction to advertise a public hearing?
I, I think a motion would be appropriate and will, uh, oh, it's not on the agenda. Uh, yes, just give me directions.
Can we just direct you to bring something back to vote on?
Yes, so from, may I clarify what I'm bringing back?
Yes, I think what we have agreed to is that we would move, um, we would start the meeting out as normal and then have proclamations. We would then have our time certens and then we would move into our meeting eliminating the first open to the public. And, um, everyone would have a, an opportunity to, um, comment on the agended items. on the agenda items. And then we, the last open to the public is open to the public. You could speak about anything.
And that will be. The, the public on each item would speak first, before any motions are made.
Yes. And with that, the only ordinance implication that you're talking about is the open to the public. The other items you're addressing will be the administrative regulation. So you'll, you'll be getting both of those changes in red line for you, so you can see, you know, what changes we're making.
And just to go back to clarify one other thing, I know at one time, all of the bids were on consent. So would, would the board be open to putting the bids back on consent?
Yes.
Yeah, we can always pull something.
Right.
And I'd like to see the administrator read.
And Mr. Howard, from now on, you're going to read everything.
Are you going to have to pay me a lot more money? So, I want to get paid by per letter. So.
Jeff Rogers, Jeff Rogers read them, Brad Thorpe read them, Randy Oliver read them. You know, it makes it a little bit nicer and more civil.
I would love to talk to you about that after this meeting. I've, I've been in this actually business for 30-something years. I'm not disagreeing with you, but that's not a best practice. I'll just leave it at that.
You, you mean to have you read them?
Yeah, what I'm saying, I think there's a, there's a way of doing efficient meetings, but I'm saying if you're reading the whole full agenda packet, I don't think that's a course of action.
That's what she means. I think when she says the subject item, when it's on.
Okay, yeah, I'm okay with, yes. I'm just saying if you're reading the whole.
That's all she's trying to say.
Backup material that's different. Okay.
You would read off what the subject matter is, and then.
Yeah. Yeah, I understand that. I'm just saying if you're reading the whole.
We're not here to make the meeting longer.
Yeah, the agenda memorandum, that's a lot of, I mean, that's just a lot of backup detail. You're going to lose people. That's not a normal course of business.
No, I don't think that was her point. I think her point is to read the subject matter.
Yeah, we've not had that discussion, so I didn't know what the point was, this point.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If we're going to, the only, the only thing that's, that's part of the ordinance is removing that first public input, right? So if we're going to change, or if we're going to remove that, then it needs to be advertised as a public hearing to, to change that ordinance, right? So this board needs to direct her to advertise that public hearing for 10 days?
It, it, it has to be advertised 10 days before you're going to hear it. So we'll make sure that it's in the paper 10 days in advance.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barrett.
So my only issue with that is if we're changing that, and obviously this board agrees that we will make sure the public speaks before we make a motion. We say that, but I'm thinking of our legacy on. So 15 years from now, is the public going to be protected? Or is that just something they can change? Oh, no, we're going to just switch it back up, and the public doesn't get to speak first, and there's no open to the public. So I would want something put into ordinance administrative regulations, wherever the appropriate place is, so that the public always gets a chance to speak first.
May I respond?
Yeah, yes ma'am.
So, my intention was to advertise the change to the ordinance and also provide changes to the administrative regulation, which will have the, the items that you've talked about, that, that you'll have a comfort break without a time certain, but just a comfort break, have it state that the public will be invited to speak on each agenda item before the board considers the agenda item. And I, I guess the, you know, the administrator reading the title. I thought I would work with the administrator and see how to write that and put that in the administrative regulation.
No, I think what Commissioner Finnegan is wanting to know is, is to codify in the ordinance that the, not necessarily the administrative regulation, but in the ordinance, that the public gets to give input before a motion is made. Is that?
Yes, I want to protect the public in perpetuity.
So you want it in the ordinance rather than the administrative regulation?
Both, forever, but I want to make sure that it's not just something that can be easily changed, that the public will have a say 20 years from now.
How, whichever y'all want me to do.
I would say that, that, that part of it, the, the public input portion of it, removing the first one, and then making sure that the public has input on each agenda item before a motion is made, that that should be in the ordinance. The other stuff, you know, the order of the agenda, I think that can be an administrative regulation. Does that make sense?
Yes. Thank you.
I don't, I don't want to seem petty, but I don't want the administrator just to say, disp, you know, C8, disposal surplus property. Okay? Because to me, that makes no sense to our citizens sitting in the audience. He needs to read the paragraph that's here. You know, approval, deletion of following items. So that if you're not going to be doing the discussion and making a motion up here prior to letting the audience, you know, letting the ci, you know, the citizens have their input, they need to know exactly. Now, yes, they can get copies at the back door, okay? But the thing is, to me, I want each and every one, if they're going to go first, know exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, I think a lot of, you know, the, we can, we can work on that. I think there's, we, we give detail, I think, now on the agenda. We can read some of that. My, my concern was if we're getting into, you know, we're fixing, we're, we're looking to get into really doing a new staff report, which could be pages. I mean, that's a lot of information, but I think there's a way to give just a little bit of information that is still relevant to the public, to look at that. And I think you've actually, your actually current agenda actually, actually expands more than most governments do right now. So you have a lot of information on there now. You could read that off. I think that could be a compromise. I could work with you outside of this to determine what that should be.
Well, let me give you an example. July 22, 2014, the county administrator read B30, CPA 1418 Trailmaster's Plan, and went on to say, set a public hearing on such and such, and it only took him maybe two minutes. And he read the little blurb that was there. That's all I'm asking. If we're asking our citizens to put their input in prior to us up here discussing it and putting in a motion or a second, and then voting on it, I really think that we need to, to step back a little in time. And yes, it may take a little time. My thing, my thing is, okay, we do have all the high salary people out there, okay? They're getting paid whether they're here watching us, or they're at their office watching us. The citizens are going to pay it no matter what. We're getting paid by the citizens. I think the citizens deserve some respect and a little bit of, you know, our time. We only meet once every two weeks. That's the only time the five of us can actually sit up here and discuss something like this, or anything else that comes through. So if it takes from 1 o'clock to 10 o'clock, I'm sorry. It takes from 1 till 10. But I don't think all of the administrators, you know, the division heads and stuff, should be expected to do that, because once their item is done, they should be able to leave and go back to their office. And we should have some semblance down, and I've said it before. The order on the agenda should be this section, then the next section, then the next section, so that all of, say, Mr. Cheeks are all at one shot. So that all of his department's stuff is taken care of. All of, you know, Mr. Carlton Hulse is done at one shot. And it should be orderly. And it wouldn't take that much more time to do what was done previously. And that, you know, that's why, all I wanted was to, to, you know, bring this up so that we could do something, possibly. And I know, I'm only one person, but I think that moving backwards, and I'm sure you know that the meetings went along fine, you were there. Okay? And we only had one open to the public, and that was at the beginning. The one at the end, you know, if you have it at the beginning, you don't need it at the end. And I don't, you know, if we go to, I don't like taking away the open to the public, but I also don't like putting the people talking before we discuss it. But that's my personal thing.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I take exception with something that you said there to imply that it's disrespectful to the public, because we don't spoon-feed every word to the public up here. On each agenda item, I think is off ba, off point. I do think that there is a compromise to be had, that the county administrator can read a brief, or give us a brief description about what's there, and then we can go into our discussion. The public then will have their opportunity to come in and talk, and then we can vote on it. We don't need to read every single word of this agenda. He doesn't need to read every single word of this agenda. That's not what the public's looking for.
That's not what I'm looking for, you know, Mr. Carter. What I'm looking for is, you know, getting a little bit more than just B28. Okay? And that's about what we've been doing when we get to the E's for the last god knows how long. And to me, that's not right. Somebody needs to say what B28 is, what I, whatever it is, or C, you know, so that there is a little bit more for even the clerk that's copying it down. She has to probably look on her thing to copy, because don't you copy it down when you do the minutes?
Actually, we only do the item number.
Right. Okay.
I think this dead horse is thoroughly beat.
Yes.
Why don't we?
So we have direction.
Yes. We've provided direction. Why don't we wait and see what the county administrator can come up with if, if we get through the first couple of meetings, and we feel like we would like to hear more or less of the detail, then we can give that direction. But I think we've, we've given direction on where we're headed to.
Thank you.
Chair, is that consensus of the board? Is that how we can do this, is consensus of the board?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. We're bringing consensus, so. Chairs, do you want us to go by roll call? So consensus of the board, Commissioner Kennard.
Yes.
Commissioner Barrett.
Yes.
Commissioner Beige, yes. Commissioner Finnegan.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Alright.
Now, if it's still my turn, I had one other thing.
It's not your turn. No, I'm kidding. Commissioner Barrett, yes, please.
The county has a process for permits that we make the people follow. In order to get a permit, a building permit, you have to turn in plans that are 100%. Not 90%, and they're due any day, or 95% or whatever. But as, as a commission, last meeting, you approved sending off to get permits. Yes, permits take time. I understand that. And I, as a person, I understand that, as a citizen. But to me, that sets a bad example. We are the rule setters, and we break the rules in front of everybody. And we set off for permits for a building that hasn't been, plans have not been brought back to us yet, okay? They have not been approved, but yet, we're going to send and spend money to get these permits. I really think that that is a bad example to be setting to our citizens. And, and I would like the permit to either be put on hold for right now, till we get the 100% plans, or something be done till, to, to do that. And yes, I know, it takes time to get the permit, because it takes all this time, you know. But if we have the plans, then we can say, yes, we agree with these plans 100%, or I don't like that. You know, we might not like what comes back from these plans.
Well, Commissioner Barrett, I will say that I think what you're referring to is the animal shelter.
Yes, ma'am.
The animal shelter has been a great amount of discussion, I think, for at least three years that I know of, maybe before. I'm sure that you have been to the animal shelter. It's, it's deplorable. We've gone down the road. We've got some plans. I think they're probably, probably over 99% done at this point, because they were 99% the last meeting. That still has to come back to the board. I'm not sure where, what, what's that next step is there. But there's a multitude of reasons that we need to move forward with this animal shelter. One, it needs to get off of the airport property. One of the things that I, I'm, I'm just kind of going to go on my rant here for a minute. Almost every application that we see that comes before us is of residential development. This board has got to get, we have got to get ourselves into a position that we are attracting businesses here, good-paying jobs. We can't just have more housing developments and less jobs, because the, the financial formula doesn't work out. And that airport is probably one of the best places that we have an opportunity to get, get a shovel in the ground and start promoting, which has already gone out into a magazine. We got something by email this week. We've got to get jobs here. We have to have a way to keep our people here and employed. And the animal shelter is in, in terrible condition. I think it's, I don't know, 60 years old. We're out of space, and when you're building a building, and I know it sounds exorbitant, I don't like it either. But at the end of the day, you're not building for what we need today. You're looking, you're projecting of what you need for the next 20, 30 years. I don't know what that number is, but we're, that's part of the reason that we engaged into a service with Metro Forecasting. That's going to help give us a, a guideline to where this community is going and where things need to happen. That animal shelter is being put into the middle of the county. We've identified the piece of property. It's, this has moved down the tracks that far, where we know where we're at. We're trying to just take one more little piece of it off. And I do believe that, I don't know about when you say that they can't, they have to have 100% permit, or 100% design before they can get a permit. I'm not sure about that. I don't know. Mr. Howard, can you address that?
Steve Staff, Eric.
Because I believe that you, in the last meeting, when we talked about it, you said that it was co, it was a common practice.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Eric Head, Community Services. Specifically, the permit we were talking about was the Swift Mud Environmental Resource Permit, not the building permit. So, the, the architect and engineer, the engineering plans, that Swift Mud permit is for the site plan. And the site plan, part of all of it is technically at 100%. So they can go ahead and start that process for that Swift Mud permit about 30, you know, three to four months. So if we start that process in January, we expect to be, you know, fully 100% and actually out, you know, it'll come back to you. You'll put it out to bid, and that comes back. So by April, around that March or April timeframe is our estimated time at this point. When it come back, when all the bids come back, they will, the builder will not have to wait on the environmental resource permit. That will already be completed.
So for instance, that is no different than Betts Farm. They're asking for an environmental permit right now on Betts Farm. I see I'm on the list that I get all the environmental permits. That's not a building permit. They're coming, they're, they're asking for that to get ahead of what they're going to submit to the county. So that, the environmental permit is completely different than the building permit, and that's what we approved that day.
Okay, but what, what he said is exactly what I said. They are not ready yet. They haven't got, okay, you can go to Swift Mud, because this is the site you want. But maybe that's not the site we want. We don't know, because we don't know exactly what the building is going to look like, how big it's going to be. You said we want to look at something that's going to be here for 30 or 40 years, okay? We know how many animals we've got currently, and how many, you know, and we've got more people coming in, and more people coming in, and more people. Do you really think that they are going to be responsible citizens? Or do you think we're going to need a larger animal shelter, because we will have, get the same type of citizens we have now? And that means we need to be planning for a much larger facility than we have. So I would like to see the plans come in before I start saying, okay, this is definitely where I want the site. And I don't, you know, I, I didn't say I don't want the site, or we don't need it. We do need an animal shelter, and we do need to do something positive about it. But the thing is, I don't think it's right to, to be going after permits ahead of schedule.
Well, with all due respect, I'm going to disagree with you. We've been at this for a very, very long time. We've identified a piece of property. The plans have been presented to this board. It's time to move on. We've beat it up, I don't, for years. And it's something that, that we have discussed, and it's been before this board on, I think, numerous times. And it's time to just, it's, it's on a track, and we need to keep on the track that we're on.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Kennard.
I agree with you. This idea has been thoroughly vetted, and while there's certainly many in the This idea has been thoroughly vetted, and while there's certainly many in the public that are wildly supportive of it, and we can't possibly build it large enough, there are others in the community that, that absolutely hate the idea and don't want anything more out there than crates. The, the board has had a lot of discussion about this. There will be more discussion to be had about the size of it, the price tag on it. But ultimately, we've decided on a piece of property out there. It's, that's the property where the new animal shelter will go. It will be constructed out there. And Commissioner Barrick, I understand what you're saying. I voted against that, that agenda item to move forward with the permits. But we don't need to rehash all of these things, whether a vote goes our way or not. That one certainly did not go the direction that I thought that it should go. But that's, that's water under the bridge at this point. And if, if Eric says that we can move forward with, with getting the Swift Mud permit, that was, that was the direction of the majority of the board. And we're elected to be part of a board, not five individual commissioners. And so I support the, the decision of the board to move forward with it.
Commissioner Barrick, can I have anything further?
No, at this point, I just, you know, I just don't think it's a good example for the board to be setting to the residents that we as a board can go get a permit before we have everything in, in place. But we expect them to have everything in place before they can come to us for a permit.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Cannard.
I have nothing, thank you.
Commissioner Davis.
We're on my agenda item now, or we, have we moved on to mine?
Yes.
Okay. For some reason, committee reports got dropped off the agenda, that's all I have is TDC. So Tourism Development will be launching, and we are open for business. National Awareness Campaign to get the word out that we are not closed and we are ready for manatee season and beyond. It's 50,000 in media and will run for approximately six weeks. This is in addition to our ongoing advertising campaigns and certainly all within our prescribed budgets. TDC will participate in the 2025 Board Leadership Symposium in Orlando this year. It's an MBA-style immersion program. And so, so one staffer and a couple of board members will be going to that to fully engage and learn about best practices for destinations across North America for cutting-edge destination marketing organization. This is really cool. So we have Partners in Tourism, that started, I want to say, earlier this year. It's, we do a monthly gathering at one of our tourism operators. Our next event is gonna be at the Cove Pub and Grub this Wednesday. I think that means tomorrow, I'll have to look at my calendar. August, tomorrow, yes, okay. What time is that? 8:30 AM tomorrow morning at the Cove. And TDC will be officially launching Phase 1 of My Love Language Strategic Plan 2025 to prepare for a three-to-five-year roadmap to fully support our local tourism efforts and long-term planning. And by the numbers, we were down 5% year-over-year, and the TDC board collectively breathed a sigh of relief and called that a massive win, considering everything that struck us in the last year. We have been in the black, we have had year-over-year gains. Every year I've been on that board, this is the first time, I believe, we've declined. We were down 5%, 171,000 from last fiscal year. It was down year, across the entire state. But based on other counties in the state, we actually fared really well compared to other counties in the state. Visitors accounted for 24% of total spend towards local businesses. This is really important to support our hurting businesses, especially on the West Coast. The top, the visitors came from Tampa, Orlando, Jacksonville, Atlanta, and Miami were the biggest ones, so. And thank you, August, for preparing a fabulous recap of our last board meeting, I appreciate that.
And just for simplification of our agenda, I condensed.
Oh, okay.
Everything from, you have a committee report, you have something to say, we'll just do it under one.
Good deal.
Finnegan, you have anything? Commissioner Cannard, I would like to extend our condolences to you on the passing of your father. Very sorry for your loss.
He's a good man, a great dad.
Commissioner Beige, my, Madam Chair, my apologies. I have another committee report and it's a doozy.
Okay.
If it weren't so important, I, I'm so sorry. I think I blocked it out, it was a fairly traumatic, traumatic experience. So I also chair the Medical Examiner Board, and we had our quarterly meeting last Wednesday. Sometime between the last meeting and this meeting. Now, mind you, as a refresher for some of you, and perhaps Commissioner Barrick's not aware of this, it is a District 5 is five counties. We have Seminole County is a sixth county, which is from District 24. Seminole County didn't like the counties in District 24. They petitioned to join our district a number of years ago, so it's oddly a six-county board that spans two districts. The current morgue is completely overloaded. They are putting doctors in broom closets there. It is, we have way outgrown that morgue. It's in Lake County, but it is owned by Marion County, and Marion County is the managing county. So all of us pay a very reasonable management fee to Marion County to carry that load for the six counties. There's no room to expand it that, so we embarked on the last couple of years figuring out where to put the morgue. What is it, you know, the right kind of property for that, where should it be? So the current staff, the very capable doctors and all the assistants and so forth, wouldn't have to relocate, et cetera. So we settled on property in Marion County. Marion County very kindly offered to front the bond for all six counties. We came in at, I believe, 21 million total cost, which is pretty doggone good. Seminole at one point, because he has some experience in forensics, swears it's gonna cost 35 million. And he, and that particular commissioner had, was the only one on the board that expressed, prior expressed a little concern about what Seminole's portion was. And we, we pay based on population, so every year it goes up a little bit, up or down a little bit comparatively of the percentages change. So had a little problem with how that was a portion, also thought that 20 to 25 million was a pie in the sky number. They are still currently sitting at 21 million. So between the last quarterly meeting and this quarterly meeting, I get a call from Madam Attorney who says Lake and Seminole are leaving the district. Okay, this is so uncool. We've spent two years enormous staff time. Marion's already fronted 3 million in land purchase. This ship has sailed. And the enormous waste of taxpayer dollars, if we have to unravel this, is unbelievable. So I was not as worried about Seminole leaving, they're not part of our district. They're the only ones that had possibly, you know, been squawking just a tiny bit, not a lot, but a tiny bit. But Lake County, you gotta be kidding me. Never said, Commissioner Blake never said a word. And so the four counties that are still in alliance, all four of us basically piled on saying exactly what I said. This is inappropriate, it's a ginormous waste of taxpayer money. The new commissioner for Lake happens to be Commissioner Sabatini. And he came in with a very strong attitude of, we're out, we're out. And Seminole, Commissioner Zembauer unfortunately was 30 minutes late, he got hung up on the turnpike. And so when he came in, we were already discussing the item. And he finally made it clear, it made it sound like it was not a vote for Seminole. And I said, can you please clarify? And he said, we are exploring other options. I said, wait a minute, you too. It was an agenda item and a vote to leave the district. And I don't think Commissioner Sabatini knew what that was. I finally had to say, I think the word you're looking for is consensus. So all five of them publicly stated that they wanted out, but there was not an official vote taken, because there wasn't an agenda item. So where it was left, the reason it got really heated, and where it was left was that they were leaving because they believed they can serve their citizens with a more cost-effective morgue by leaving. And I said, well, I don't really see how two counties can do a better job than six counties in pooling resources. Medical examiner authority is incredibly expensive. Those doctors make a lot of money, and there is a giant shortage of medical examiner doctors in the United States. Huge shortage. So we have to pay through the nose for those doctors, and to have that combined into one facility and one team certainly gives you economies of scale. So Sabatini, Commissioner Sabatini said, well, you know, we can do it a lot less expensively. And I was like, well, I'd be really happy to hear how you can do it so much less expensively, because my citizens would like to save money too. And Commissioner Stone from Marion County said the same thing. He said, well, it's not my responsibility to give that to you. And I said, well, there's always public records requests for Lake County. So we may need to work on that, Madam Attorney, it's getting contentious. I don't know where it's come, come down. The Commissioner Campbell from Hernando stated publicly, all of this is public record, I'm only repeating what happened at the board, obviously you can hear a tape. Commissioner Campbell from Hernando came up with the idea that because the old morgue is in Lake County, that they're hoping that the four counties will still move, still build a now more expensive board, because four counties are fronting it. We would have to redo some of the architectural designs, because it's gonna have to be downsized, because that's one-third of the six counties leaving. They're hoping we'll leave the current morgue, which is in Lake County, and then Lake County and Seminole can use the old building, because it is plenty big enough for two counties. Which is an unfortunate, unfortunate lack of working together between counties. I, I find it disturbing and disappointing, so. Yes.
Commissioner Finnegan.
Can I ask you a question?
Of course.
You said that Marion County actually owns it, it's in Lake County. So if the remaining counties, you said that the counties were looking to build a new one, because we're overcapacity. But if two super-large counties are leaving, the opposite should be true, right? The ones that remaining, that should be enough space, and they would have to build a new one. So I'm assuming now the counties don't have to build a new one, because these two can exit and figure it out, right?
You're absolutely correct. The four counties, if we lose one-third of our population that we serve, basically, the four counties can actually stay in there and stay in Lake County, because Marion County owns the building. And that's what our plan is right now, but we've got to wait to see that this is a voting item for the other two counties. But I would, I would, you know, please reach out to any commissioners you know on those two counties, especially Lake, to say, you know, how about working together, guys? This is, we're all in this together, we're all trying to serve our citizens as, you know, cost-effectively as possible.
When the opposite, when we want to do the opposite, wouldn't we want them to leave? Because then it saves our taxpayers the money having to build a new shelter.
We, it's definitely, it, it's a little bit like our animal shelter, it's, it's pretty far, it's very long in the tooth. So it's only, it is going to push it out, but we've, also Marion's already purchased the land. So we're gonna have to make Marion, you know, the, the six counties, the other five are gonna have to make Marion whole on everything that they've fronted for all six counties, you know? And it's a mess, the attorneys and, and budget directors are gonna have to dig into it and figure out what's a fair way to separate. But, you know, this would have been a fine plan two years ago. Now that we're this far down the line, it just, to my mind, it smacks of enormous government waste.
If you figure out how to dissolve it, can we apply that to the Water Authority Board?
Thanks for the levity, Commissioner Cannard.
Trying to make eliminate.
Yeah.
So, you know, I'm, I'm all about teamwork, and I'm just really disappointed that this happened.
Keep us posted.
Thank you.
It is the holiday season, so I would like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, because we will not see you before Thanksgiving. And remind everybody in the audience and on TV, there are lots of festivities that are gonna be taking place. You're gonna have the Inverness Christmas Tree lighting, Floral City Heritage Days, the Crystal River, I'm sure Homasasa, you're gonna have a boat parade. So keep those in mind as we travel out this season. We're going to our last open to the public. Would anybody like to come speak? I thought.
Well, that's cute.
That's cute. I have nothing.
You forgot Madam Attorney.
I did earlier, I think, ask her. Open to the public. Please state your name for the record and your address.
Good evening, John Labriola, Inverness. And I wanted to just comment on the discussion you've just had about the, eliminating the first open to the public. This item actually came before the board two years ago, as you recall. It was a, a decision that, well, not a decision, but a conversation that Commissioner Schleba started. There was a whole lot of blowback about her decision to bring that to the board, and it was just quashed. I mean, it was just overwhelmingly quashed. There was only one commissioner on the board at the time who supported her in that position. Eliminating the first open to the public would be, would, would move Citrus County from being one of the most responsive counties in the state to be one, being one of the least responsive. Now, for example, if, if there is an item on the, even if there's an item on the agenda, let's say it's an item on the agenda that people want to talk about, they can't say necessarily for the entire meeting. They want to speak at the beginning of the meeting, and then they want to get out, to let, let the board know how they feel about that item. But for the most part, it's items that are not on the agenda. And you're telling people that they can't even talk about any item that's not on the agenda. For example, like, let's say, the FDOT's plan to, to, to expand the turnpike through Citrus County. That, that came up a number of times a couple of years ago. People came to the board, they, they wanted the opportunity to hear all of you, not call you off, you know, you know, at random when you're not, when you're not here, when you, when you don't have to respond, but to hear what the board's position is on a particular item, like the turnpike moving through the county. And people came, on a number of occasions, they came and they spoke about that, to the point where the board decided to have a discussion about that item. That would be gone. If it's not on the agenda, it would be gone. So I think it's a huge, a very huge change. I think, I've been to a number of county commissions, they almost all have an opportunity for the public to speak on any item, whether it's on the agenda or not at the beginning of the meeting. You don't tell people to wait until the very end. And then I think at the last open to the public, you don't even have to respond, if I remember correctly. So they want the opportunity to speak to the, to the board, to hear your input on that particular item, and then to say, you know, to, to be able to know where you stand on that item, without having to wait through the entire meeting and then wait, wait until the end. And then at that point, there's nobody in the meeting, there's nobody in the room anymore, you don't have to say anything. So I think it's a huge mistake. I would believe, I believe you should keep things as they are and not make this huge change. And remember, the, the person who made this, the, this, they wanted to make this discussion in the first place is off the board, and that was a big part of it, because her lack of, you know, being responsive to the public. Thank you.
Anyone else?
As one who speaks to the board fairly consistently, I don't have a problem with doing away with the beginning public statements. There's a lot of things that you discuss as we go along that might counter something that I'm thinking of or wanting to present. I do have a question, though, that what happens sometimes is during this part of the meeting, you just had a discussion about the animal shelter with no kind of public comment or anything else. There's a discussion about the, the other board, and there's no public comment for it. There was no public comment on E8, on the EMT trainings. So I just kind of want to remind you that public comment is very important, particularly at the end, when you bring up your reports, that we have a chance to comment on it. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, closing, oh, oh, one more.
Good afternoon, Board. My name is David Garcia, I'm the Director of State Government Affairs for Charter Communication Spectrum. Met with Commissioner Davis, County, Mr. County Administrator, good to see you again. Congratulations, Commissioner Barrick, on, on your getting elected. And I just wanted to stop by today and introduce myself for those that I haven't met on the board yet, and let you know that I'm available for any questions about our infrastructure and what we're doing in Citrus County. So if you have any questions, I'll stay after the board meeting, be happy to give you my card. Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate you being here. Anyone else from open to the public? Closing open to the public. Cheryl, can you please? Oh, I'm sorry.
Because I think this is the perfect time to comment. Mr. Labriola said, we don't think that we have to. Commissioners really don't have to comment after the beginning or the end. Commissioners really don't have to comment after the beginning or the end, and if we choose to, we can. And I'm choosing to, and Madam Chair's allowing it. I think both speakers had great points to that. I think I was very much against, before getting rid of open to the public because the public should have a chance to speak first before a motion's called. The way we're proposing, I think, solves that and is government efficiency. To Mr. Labriola's point, I do understand about people waiting and they have something that they want to say. If the board's open, I had, I'd thrown it out there, but there was a lot being said. If we want to put a time on that, like, I, I know it's going to be difficult because like Mrs. Spence, or Ms. Spence says, you know, after all of this, they want a chance to comment, which is now at the end, open to the public. I, I don't really, I guess, know how to work that out with the time because if we did a time certain, maybe like what Commissioner Davis just told us wouldn't have been said yet. So, it gets dicey if anyone has a suggestion with that. But there will be an opportunity. And then, I guess what I'm saying, if the public is saying the extra things at the end, that maybe we should have a, a chance, and we do have a chance to comment on that. So, I want to be fair and open to everyone, and we can be efficient at the same time and still give the public their chance to give their opinion before us. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you for those comments. I agree. Cheryl, could you please announce the advisory board, advisory board announcements?
Beverly Hills Advisory Council, expiration of terms. Announce the terms of expiration for three regular board, regular member positions on the Beverly Hills Advisory Council. Current terms expire on January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, and the new terms will be for two years and will expire on January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. Announce terms of membership available and accepting of applications for three regular member positions on the Beverly Hills Advisory Council. The terms for the regular members will be through January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. Q2, Citrus Springs Advisory Council, announce expiration of terms. Announce terms of expiration for two regular member positions on the Citrus Springs Advisory Council. The current term expires on January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, and the new terms will be for two years and will expire on January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. Announce terms of membership available and accepting of applications for two regular member positions on the Citrus Springs Advisory Council. The terms for the regular members will be through January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. Q3, Tourist Development Council. Announce the expiration of terms for three regular positions on the Tourist Development Council Advisory Board. The terms expire on January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. The new terms for the four years and will expire on January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-nine. One position is for a citizen who demonstrates an interest in tourism, and two positions are for owner, operator of a tourist accommodation. Q4, Aviation Advisory Board. Announce the terms of expiration for one District Two regular member position, one District Three regular member position, and one member-at-large position on the Aviation Advisory Board. The current term expires on January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. The new terms will be for two years and will expire on January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. Applications will be received by the County Administrator's Office until December first, two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you. And just as, the upcoming meeting is December the tenth at one PM here in the courthouse, and then the upcoming workshop and special meeting, Citrus County Legislative Retreat is December the seventeenth at nine AM at the Locanto Government Building. And then, just as a reminder from earlier today, the Citrus County Strategic Planning Retreat on January twenty-first at nine eight AM will be at this building, in this room, not at the Locanto Government Building. And then, there will be a Board of County Commission meeting that will follow at one PM in this room as well. And then, Item Three is the Citrus County Legislative Planning Retreat, August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, at nine AM at the Locanto Government Building. Thank you, and have a wonderful Thanksgiving with your families. We are adjourned.